Good afternoon, welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is Marion City Council Work Session for January sixteenth. First item on the agenda is a presentation regarding Prospect Meadows.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have our friends from Prospect Meadows that they've got a presentation prepared, Tim, Angela, and Jack. This is, we meet on a regular basis, and that's part of an agreement that we have in place. And one of the things that we talked about with the ARPA award that council awarded to Prospect Meadows, oh, about a year ago. So, but they have a presentation that they'd like to give council.
Welcome.
Great. Thanks, Ryan. Thanks, Nick. My name's Tim Strelner, and I'm the board chair at Prospect Meadows right now. I was thinking about how long I'd been involved, but somewhere between ten and fifteen years. I kind of quit counting right there. But it's been a wonderful project. And, you know, we appreciate the opportunity to get in front of you folks kind of in a organized manner today. Sometime, we're with Ryan a lot, you know, sometimes with city council members one-on-one or run into Mayor Nick. So it's a great opportunity for us to do that. We're preparing for season six, which is hard to believe. It's also fantastic, right? As we head into season six. And, you know, as I think about the mission, eleven, twelve years ago, trying to get this facility built, there was really two pieces to it. One was to affect the quality of life locally, especially for our youth in a positive manner. And number two, make a substantial impact in the economic aspect of our local areas of Marion and Lynn County. And I think we feel great about both of those objectives, if you will. Always more work to be done, but I think we're on track five years later for really accomplishing some of those goals with wonderful help and great partnership from the city of Marion. So, you know, again, we talk all the time, and the work will never be done. But we've got two folks here today from our team, and we'll let them do the actual presentation. I think we'll keep you at least five minutes ahead of schedule, Sarah, if we have any luck here. Okay, so we'll be off and running. But got Angela Jordan with us today. Angela is our Director of Development, a position we added about a year ago, and in the nonprofit space, which I learned a lot about in the last ten or twelve years. It's an all-the-time thing of raising money, right? And Angela has joined us a little over a year ago in that, in that space, and has done a wonderful job. And then, obviously, Jack Rader, who, if you don't know him, I don't know, you're one of the few maybe around here that doesn't. But we were very fortunate to get Jack to lead this organization eleven, twelve, thirteen years ago, in his retirement job from the Cedar Rapids Colonels, working however much he works. And title of President and CEO doesn't do it justice, because without Jack, you know, I don't think we'd ever gotten this built, and we wouldn't be at the point we're at, for sure. So, thanks for your time today. And from the Board of Directors, we appreciate all the support we've had from the city of Marion, and we'll kick this over to Jack, and as close as we have to a Director of Technology is Angela. So hopefully, this all works, okay? So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us this afternoon. Angela Jordan with Prospect Meadows, Director of Development. And I'll be doing the IT, I guess, for Jack.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Jack Rader. Did you need my address?
Go ahead.
Anyway, thanks for the opportunity to come in and update. I know we've been here in the past from time to time, but certainly always nice to get back in front of this group and kind of update you on what's been happening. As Tim said, getting ready for year six, which really seems almost impossible. But reality is, it is year six for Prospect Meadows. So, and excited about this year. We do have Angela put together this presentation, which kind of, I think, goes over a lot of different things here. So if you want to start that, we can maybe kind of work through it. One of the things that I think we take a lot of pride in is that we kind of market this as where all kids can play. And really, if you've not been out there for on Saturdays, Saturdays is when we host the Miracle League, which is with kids with different abilities and special needs. And it really is a, it's, it's worth the trip out there just to watch that. Last year, last fall, they had a hundred and twenty-eight kids that participated in that, in that league, which was a record. And they've actually, they used to do it on Saturday mornings. Now it's almost all-day Saturday. They start at nine in the morning. I think they finished at two-thirty this past fall. So it may even be longer this year if they continue to add kids to the league. They bring buddies out there that play with these kids and help them when they go out on the field, bat, whatever. They all have their, their walk-up music. It really is a neat addition to Prospect Meadows, and really was one of what we called four bases when the, the project was underway and built. The other thing we have out there is a League of Dreams. And that League of Dreams was initiated from the Colonels after the flood in two thousand eight. Minor League Baseball came in and worked with the Cedar Rapids Colonels to start a league for underserved population. And that league has shifted from the Colonels out to Prospect Meadows, and it's for younger ages. But it really is a great program. There's no cost to it. There's no expense. They get their uniforms. It's free coaching, bats, balls, everything. And the kids, a lot of these kids that are in this league, maybe aren't ready or don't want to play some of that high-pressure travel ball. That gets pretty intense from time to time. But a lot of these kids will play in this league, and then they'll, after they're done with this league, they'll move on to other leagues, and really have had a lot of luck with that. Families really appreciate it. Teachers, the principals, that's how it all got started, through the schools, always have been very positive that it's a great influence for these kids to do something positive in their off-time or downtime. So. All right, I'm out of breath. Just to kind of go over a few of these bullet points real quick. Attracting more than a thou- one thousand one hundred local, regional, and national teams. We talked about the League of Dreams for underserved kids. We talked about the Miracle League. A couple of those there on the bottom were really, have really developed, and we're really proud to be part of. And hopefully, that list will even grow more. But this Maya Strong Cancer fundraiser is raising over twenty thousand dollars a year now, and it's a young girl, Mel Burnett. Maya Gilchrist, that has had cancer since she's been, I think, two or three years old, and now she's sixteen or seventeen years old. The money that she raises doesn't go for herself. It actually goes for other cancer victims. So it's, it's an amazing event out there. This will be, I believe, the fourth year now that they've held it this year, this coming year at Prospect Meadows. And then the strikeout stigma for youth mental health and awareness was started over at Prairie High School. But they've got just about every local high school baseball and softball team that participates in this. We really got pushed to the seams last year. I think we had three thousand people there, which our complex wasn't necess- necessarily built to hold three thousand people, because what we do is we rotate teams. They come in, they play, they go wherever they go, and the next group comes in. But it was a great event. Obviously, they're excited about holding it out there again this year. Back to that top one, though, attracting more than one thousand one hundred local, regional, and national teams. Last year, when we're talking about that, we're really talking about the travel baseball teams and softball teams that come to Prospect Meadows. We're not talking about all the nightly play that goes on, the practices, all these other things. This is just travel teams that actually come to the area, spending anywhere from really two to four nights when they're here, just depending on the time of the year. Last year, we, like I said, we had a thousand teams. This year, we're projecting eleven hundred. Quite frankly, I think we've got a really good shot to hit twelve hundred. As of today, we have five hundred, I think, and fifty-eight teams that are booked already for two thousand twenty-four. Last year, at this time, we were about five hundred and thirty-nine teams. So we're running ahead of last year. But what's also going to add to that total is this year, we're bringing in more U triple-S-A tournaments, which we've not really been able to do in the past. But combining U triple-S-A with Perfect Game, especially early in the year, where U triple-A is stronger, Perfect Game is really, really strong in that kind of fourteen-to-eighteen-year-old bracket. But the U triple-S-A leagues are a lot younger than that. And being able to bring those in in May is what's going to get us to that eleven hundred number. And then Perfect Game is even talking about extending their tournaments into October. For whatever reason, it seems like we're having better weather in October than we are in April and maybe May, some days out there. So adding another month, and maybe it won't be the full month, but if we get another two to three teams on the end of that schedule, that's where I'm thinking that, obviously, we've got a really good chance to maybe hit that twelve hundred number. So, anyway, that, that's, that's really positive. And you know what? Why don't we go then? Yeah. One of the things that's really nice is Perfect Game has said that Prospect Meadows is their number-one travel destination all over the United States for out-of-state teams coming to a complex, which is really good. But it has to be that way here, because Iowa plays summer high school baseball. So the, a lot of the Iowa kids, they play a lot in the spring and the fall leagues, but in the summer, in, in June and July, a lot of the teams, almost all of the teams that come to Prospect Meadows are from other states. So it needs to draw teams from other states. But that is a nice designation to have. Obviously, we're a five-O-one-C-three nonprofit led by a local Board of Directors, five years of operations, numerous, numerous awards and accolades. Turbo charge, charging tourism in Lynn County. These are the numbers that I think really, for us, when we look at this, you know, you look at the different bases, you know, whether it's the Miracle League and the League of Dreams, or whether the youth kids that get to play out there, that, you know, better facilities in the area. But this sort of is what we would call, I guess, the grand slam of it. When you look at, these numbers were taken from an economic impact study that was done after the two thousand twenty-two season. We did not do one after the twenty, this past season, but the numbers this year were higher than last year. Not by a lot, but they were higher. But the, the cost to do that is fairly expensive. So obviously, we didn't think we needed to do one after the twenty-three season. But what it showed was eleven point, just over eleven million dollars in economic impact, one million dollars in tax revenues, more than a hundred and twenty-seven thousand visits. And again, that's after the two thousand twenty-two season. We had a hundred and thirty-two thousand visits last year. So like I said, the numbers were up some from the year before, and they've gone up every year. We've been able staircase and anticipating that to happen, even in our sixth year. The amazing amount of hotel nights, you can see up there, and then nearly a hundred and fifty jobs. And that's, a lot of that's part-time. But there's some full-time and part-time that go into that, that number. You know, the hotel nights, a lot of people ask, that seems like a lot of rooms. It is. But I think where, where those rooms really add up, we've got two tournaments, for example, already for two thousand twenty-four, that one, one tournament in June has a hundred and twelve teams that are already booked, and one in July has a hundred and five. Well, when you look at those numbers, there's about thirty-seven people that come per team, between thirty-six and thirty-eight, depending on the tournament. That's about four thousand people on those bigger tournaments that are coming into the area. And most of those, again, are from other states in those busy times. And where the rooms get so high is that they may come in on a Wednesday night, well, most of them do, especially if they play early on Thursday. These tournaments begin on Thursday. So they'll be here Thursday. Those four thousand people will be here for sure, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights. So that's four thousand times three, obviously, for the three nights. And then some, like I said, some will stay Wednesday night. Still a lot are here on Sunday night, but they start to dwindle on Sunday. As you get beat on Sunday, you're done. Most of them, depending on what time they lose the game, they probably will go home. Some may stay. And then there's a handful that stay for Monday for the championship rounds and this. But again, that's just a lot of nights. Now, those tournaments vary, like in, early in the year, they're not here that long, because school's still in session. So it's more of a weekend. And that, then that turns in September. It kind of goes back, with, with the exception of Labor Day weekend, it kind of goes back to a shorter timeframe than, than they are in summer. We can pass on that one. This is Brad Clement, and he's one of our key contacts with Perfect Game. Brad used to be, I think, the superintendent of schools over in Marshalltown years ago, before he retired. And his son was one of the best players in the state, and actually played at Southern Cal. And then I think he played in the major leagues for the Mariners for a number of years. I think he still holds the, the record for the most home runs in high school in the state of Iowa. But anyway, Brad really is, matter of fact, we have a conference call with him tomorrow. But he, he really is a, a great guy. But he's also a big fan of Prospect Meadows, and obviously, a nice liaison for us to have with the Perfect Game group. I think that's the last one, right? I guess I would open it up. If anybody has any questions. If not, that's fine. But we did want to come in and kind of give you an update of where we're at, what we're looking at for two thousand twenty-four. Believe it or not, we have, our first game is scheduled on March second. But the teams in Superior, that's who's playing here, the college, think that we have better weather than they do. Last year, Mason City Junior College was over here in March, and, and they couldn't play on their fields. And they got off the bus, and the guy says, my God, this is horrible. Well, I think the temperatures were like thirty-five, and the winds were a lot higher than that. He says, I tell you what. He said, if we're going to play a doubleheader here today, he said, put us on a field where the wind's blowing out. He says, I want to see some home runs. And as it turned out, they won the second game on a walk-off homerun in the bottom of the ninth inning. So, but we do get a lot of requests in March from, oh, gosh, far away, Stevens Point, Wisconsin, was here last year, which is almost up to Wausau, playing. But they have snow, and obviously, that's one big benefit for us with the turfed infield. We still have grass in the outfield, but with the turfed infield, it does give them an opportunity to, to get down here and play. And I think that number, you know, continues to grow every year, teams that want to play here in March. So, but I'll be surprised if we're playing on March second, but maybe, who knows?
Thank you. Any questions? I, I'm wondering if Angela could just give us a kind of a high-level overview of the fundraising efforts. Is that, you don't have to, but if it's possible.
No, sure. In fact, I, I was just updating Jack. I'm not going to be able to be at our board meeting tomorrow night, because I'm going to be in Des Moines, part of the tourism group across the state that's going to be visiting with our legislators. So we're extending our efforts beyond just Lynn County to try and, and work with the state to see if we can get funding. So several pots at typical, Sarah would recognize a lot of these as a development person herself. So we've got Giving Tuesday efforts. We exceeded our goal Giving Tuesday this year. I was amazed when I started. This organization had raised fifteen thousand in, twelve thousand its first year. We were up to twenty, almost twenty-three thousand this year for Giving Tuesday. That's pretty phenomenal, if you know other organizations that try to work in those efforts. Major gifts, efforts, grants. We tried a raffle last year that was not so great. It was a fifty-fifty each weekend. We're looking at something a little different this year. Trying to think of the other categories. So we just kind of have a, a broad effort every year, networking with our public entities as well. So those are kind of some of the big buckets that we work in, and some of the other efforts we're engaged with.
And I don't know if you, if one of the other guys could talk about, that obviously, this, we're in the, we're still in the first phase. How far down the road is the second phase? And people ask that in the community, you know, and so it's just good to have that information of what, what you expect, or what you're.
Yeah. No, I think it's a great question, Nick. And I, I think we look at it this way. I mean, we have pretty consistent inquiries right now about folks that, especially groups in Des Moines, that have built out complexes, and they're coming and asking, hey, you know, how about partnering on Phase Two, and those kind of things, whether it's baseball, softball, as we envisioned day one? Don't know. Supply, demand is, is the key, right? So I think, you know, there'll be another feasibility study done at some point to see what the area needs. And again, we've had some just brief conversations with Ryan about those kind of things. I think what we committed to three or four years ago was, we have to get Phase One on absolute, solid financial footing, before it makes a lot of sense to get all, you know, energized about Phase Two. So that's where our efforts are right now. But.
Do you feel like that you're, you're making progress towards that? You're on track?
I think we're making progress. And I think we have, and again, Ryan's in the loop more on a day-to-day, Nick. I think, along with our bank, who's been a great partner, I think there's some really important meetings coming up in the next thirty to sixty days, real honestly, that I think we're excited about. And there's some really neat, you know, back-channel conversations going on that way right now, some public, some private, you know? But probably not quite at the point to, you know, talk about specifics of those. But, but again, I think the strategy behind it is very solid, and we can just firm this Phase One up a touch. I think Phase Two conversations will happen quickly.
Okay. Question? Go ahead.
I have a, I have a statement, or a kind of a statement and a question, because I was able to enjoy your games out there this summer. My nephew's been playing. I had to look at the picture, because he's actually a pitcher with Minnesota Iceman. It's a senior, so I was, and couldn't remember the number, because it switches based on the team. So I kept looking, like, no, he's a lefty, so, isn't that. So, great job on that. We've seen how busy it is out there. And I kind of get the feedback from my family. Couple times, my sister stayed at hotels, and a couple times, they've stayed with us. Depends if I'm on her good side or not, that, whether they're staying with us. But on that note, though, so you have, it's not a complete state-of-play for the hotel rooms, right? You get some back, but it's not a requirement that teams register that they have to stay at hotels. Is that pretty much because we don't, we wouldn't even have?
Accurate, Sarah. And I, I think one of the misconceptions through the years that, you know, is sometimes a little bit hard to explain, is we're, we're the facility host, right? But we're not Perfect Game. We're not a U triple-S-A entity. We're not running the tournaments ourselves. So really, PG or U Trip would set the guidelines for those things, not Prospect Meadows. And I, and I think that's just kind of been a little bit of a confusing aspect of this project, as to what our role is. Perfect Game, at least here, has not become a total state-of-play. If you don't stay in our hotels and hit the guidelines on dates, blah, 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 you can't play in the tournament. They've not gone there. Really, that's their decision, not ours.
That's a good clarification, because I think that's, it's lost even on those of us who are familiar with the project. So how long, how long is Perfect Game locked in to the partnership?
Ten more years right now. So we had a fifteen-year agreement with them to start. We're working on extending that a couple more years, based on derecho and COVID and some of the challenges early. And, you know, they don't have local ownership anymore. When we started this, they did with the Ford family, who started Perfect Game. So that has all transferred to another group in ownership. But real honestly, I think we're in as good or better space with PG as we've ever been. And especially Brad, being a good Iowa guy and a friend to our project, is super important there. So ten years currently, but we're working on an extension right now.
Oh, thanks.
Anyone else? Appreciate you taking the time to come in and give us an update.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Our next item is an update on the Automatic Traffic Enforcement Program, Chief.
Good afternoon. So this is the update on the ATE program. We started issuing citations back on September eighteenth. I ran these up to December thirty-first. You can see the total number of citations there. Sixty-two percent are red light violations, and those are going to be from the two stationary cameras and systems we have at the two intersections. Highway thirteen and one fifty-one, and East Post and one hundred. There was a learning curve for people. A lot of people forgot in driver's ed. We do clock right turns on red. They forgot that you have to actually stop before you can turn right. We had people complaining, saying, hey, I slowed down. But what we don't tell them is that it doesn't issue a citation unless they're going eleven miles an hour or more over the speed limit when they make that turn. So it's not like they're pulling up to the line, inching up, and then going, they're burning through there. So I'd said this the other day at Friday to, to the folks on ELT when we were talking about this. The next time you pull up to a green light, and you've got to make a right, and you've got the green, try to do it eleven miles an hour and see what it feels like. You know you're moving. It's not, there's no mistake in that. One of the things that came up early on when we were talking about ATEs was citations and Marion residents. We've got about thirty-three percent are, right now, have been issued to Marion residents. The rest are going to people from outside the city. Cedar Rapids is a big one, but we've got people from seven or eight, nine different states that come through, particularly on the ones up on one fifty-one and thirteen. Then again, sixty-seven percent of all the citations we've had so far are coming out of those stationary cameras. We did have some downtime. We had a couple of malfunctions early on. We had to shut them off for a while. And then we had a guy that actually went off the road and nailed the main control box down on East Post and one hundred, and those lights were down completely for four or five days. Again, the stationary cameras kind of just show you the breakdown of, of each one. The fastest speed out on one hundred, eighty-six and a fifty-five. You know, when we, when we were collecting our data initially, we were, we were talking about ATEs. We saw some similar numbers out there that we brought to the council before. So that hasn't changed. I think with these, the, the big thing about the stationary cameras is that they do run twenty-four-seven, as long as we don't have somebody nail on the box. They're out there all the time. And that's a better, kind of a, an improvement over the mobile unit a little bit. I wanted to be able to bring you some statistics showing how many tickets we've had initially, or citations or violations, to show you, you know, are they going down since we started issuing citations? Because we've only got like three and a half months worth of data, I didn't think it would be feasible to do that. I don't think it would give us an accurate picture. So the next time I come before you, I think at the six-month mark, Rachel will send me a reminder. But I'll put some of that together. With all that said, I, I just kind of want to put you on notice with just the number of violations we're seeing. You know, I, I wouldn't discount the possibility of us coming back and looking to add some cameras. We've got a couple other intersections that we're finding. One of the things that we see with the, the mobile unit is we've got a couple places here in town that we, every time we put it out, we get a hundred citations. So what I want to do is, is start focusing on the school zones and see how bad the problem is there. If we've got these two problems, the one up that's up there was Tenth Avenue, three hundred ninety-six citations over three days. There was about ten thousand cars driving down that road, twenty-eight-hundred block. It's pretty busy. The average speed of the violations was thirty-eight and a twenty-five. And that's kind of cooking going down through there. So I think if we keep putting it out, well, my plan is, is when it warms up a little bit, is we'll start putting the mobile unit out. We'll leave it in one location for maybe two weeks straight. We have to pull it in and recharge it, but we'll put it out there for two weeks straight and see what that does, if that gets people. We're pretty quick about getting the citations out. It's about a five-day turnaround. So by the time somebody has a violation, it gets through the process, depending on five business days, I guess. People will then know it's out there. And if we start seeing that that, that is having an impact where people are slowing down, that may be one of those locations. We come back and say, geez, maybe we ought to put a, put a permanent camera out here, just to permanently slow people down. Fiftieth is another one that we've had a lot of problems with. Again, the mobile unit, the downside of the mobile unit is that it can only stay out for so long before we have to pull it back in and recharge the batteries and everything. The, the good side is it is mobile. We've put it out forty-six times. The majority of those are going to be in response to complaints we got from citizens. As soon as we put the first picture of it up and said, here's the mobile unit, we're ready to start putting it out, we started getting complaints in of people asking for it to be put out. Some of those were fruitful, as far as citations, where we actually saw violations. Some of them was kind of what we talked about before. They were not very productive. We would, we would put the mobile unit out there for a day and maybe not see any citations. But again, it's, it's people's perception. And if they're asking for us to do it, I want to be able to do it for them, whether we get any citations or not. Repeat offenders. I think the first time we talked, we had somebody that had seven. We've got a new winner at twelve. We've got five hundred and ten people that have two or more citations. The one with twelve, she's a, she's got a Cedar Rapids address. All twelve of those have been at Highway one hundred and East Post Road, and they Uh, all twelve of those have been at Highway one hundred and East Post Road and they started pretty much as soon as we clicked the cameras on. Uh, she hasn't quite figured that out yet. Um, the guy with seven, uh, is is an individual out in Springville. Uh, one of the people that has five, they either had five or six. They're just a bad driver. I think they had both uh controlled intersections. They had red light tickets. And we caught them at two or three different mobile deployment sites. So wherever they go, they're violating the law. So it's it's just uh, it just kind of shows you kind of what we're dealing with as far as the uh capacity. Again, these start adding up and and th- these numbers here would be the ones, uh, if they're not paying those, those will be the ones we go after with the municipal infractions. We show them the hand of God over here and let them, Cara, go after them with the municipal infractions. We've got our collections agencies online. Now he's getting ready to start ramping up where he would start making um uh address checks is the first thing they do. So they'll go through any unpaid citations, make sure that the the people haven't changed their address. Because when census gats or vendor, when they issue the citation, they go by what's off the registration of the car. So if those don't get paid, the first thing the collections company does is they go through and they look and verify, hey, is that still a good address or did the people move? And then they will reissue the citations to that new address and send it. They said they're about forty, forty-two percent. Uh, what they see is just a bad address because people don't change the registration on their vehicle. So um we'll see how that, how that turns out for us. Contested citations. So roughly four percent of the people that have gotten citations so far uh have have contested them. Uh, twenty-eight of those for about ten percent were not liable. You know, that could be uh anything from um the car was stolen. Uh, they left the plate on the car when they sold the car and they can bring us the paperwork saying, look, I don't own that vehicle anymore, but I sold it. And believe it or not, people still leave their license plates on their cars when they sell them. Uh, we've seen that before, uh, things like that. We've had a couple of instances where people have dropped their cars off at mechanic shops. And then we pick a car up speeding or running a red light when the mechanic's out doing a test drive after they do the repairs. Uh, so we've had to tell those people, hey, go to the mechanic shop. We will help you uh show them the ordinance, show them the violation and and so far, all the mechanic shops have have ponyed the money up to cover the expense of the citation for the vehicle owner. Some people get creative. We had one individual contested his, uh, I believe it was a speeding ticket, claimed that he was driving his wife uh to the hospital because she was pregnant and they were going to have their baby. Uh, the lieutenant who was doing the uh contested hearings said, okay, send me the birth certificate. And uh the, it turned out the baby was actually born like two days before the violation occurred. So it was a good shot. Uh, just didn't quite pan out for him, but uh you gotta give him credit for uh trying to be a little bit creative. Uh, the violations versus citations again. So the citations are ones where we actually issue what a citation or a ticket. The violations would be every instance that we've catch somebody on camera running the red light or speeding. The reason there's a difference in there, we s- issue about half, go out to citations is is if we can't verify the plate, we may not be able to see all the numbers on the plate, so we don't know who to send the ticket to. If the plate doesn't match the vehicle, if the plate comes back to say a red Mustang. But the car it's on is a blue Chevy pickup truck, we won't issue a citation. So uh that's the reason there's that that difference in there. So the paid citations, again, the total fines that had been paid so far is two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Uh, the vendor uh got about eighty-three thousand, almost eighty-four thousand dollars of that. Census Gatto gets thirty-five dollars from each citation uh is their fees. Uh, again, that's not pure profit because they they fronted everything. They paid for the installation. It's their technology. It's their research and development that goes into their camera systems. They bought the car that the mobile unit is in. Uh, they do the upkeep on the cameras. For us, it's basically hands off, other than our guys having to go in and verify the tickets, which is a a fairly quick process on the computer. And then we hear the contested um citations. They handle everything, the back room stuff. Uh, people send their uh payments to Census Gatto, Census Gatto keeps track of that. They they run the dashboard that has all the statistics on it and everything else. So uh it's a little misleading when people think, geez, that's a lot of money for them, but they've got a lot of money sunk into it. Uh, for us, again, a hundred and thirty-six thousand four eighty would be our share of what the city would get. You know, when you, when you think about ten minutes per ticket, you know, for that many tickets, it's about four hundred hours. Man hours is what we would do if we were out writing that many tickets. So that's a benefit to us right there. The the money piece is is nice, you know, but it's not. It's the time it's saving us. Again, it keeps our officers off the street. We talked about the uh um no bias in writing these tickets, generating them. Uh, so there's no questions about racial profiling or anything like that. Overall, I'm satisfied so far with what we've seen. Uh, like I say, I want to get some more data so I can come back and show you, hey, here's the impact that these cameras are having. Good or bad. Um, but have have y'all got any questions about anything I can answer?
Questions?
Go ahead, Steve. Yeah, Chief, when you come back in another uh three months for your six month update on this. I mean, one of the key aspects we talked about when we were looking at those ATEs was the safety aspect, trying to slow down traffic, minimize or reduce accidents. So when you come back in in six months on maybe on even on an ongoing basis, can you go back for uh another two backwards, another two or three years? Give us the accident report at these two intersections and then show us what that's like then on an ongoing basis, once the ATEs have been implemented?
Yes.
Appreciate it.
Go ahead.
Thanks. So with the the mobile unit, you guys have deployed that around, what was it, forty something?
Forty-six.
Forty-six?
Yep.
How, how many deployments is that versus like how many requests you guys have gotten for that?
Thirty, thirty some odd requests. So when we put it in the the policy, it was based off of of community complaints or for other public ser- or public safety reasons. And that would be areas where our guys know, hey, we're always going to have speeders down like Auburnette Road, Twenty-Ninth Avenue. We know we're going to have speeders down there. So be about thirty, I want to say thirty-eight times were were citizen complaints. Uh, the other ones were were ours or had come in from our officers.
And how long is like a typical deployment of that unit then?
We were doing like twelve hours. So we were deploying it out three times a week uh for about twelve hours. Uh, we'd bring it back in and recharge it's. Um, we added an extra battery for the cold weather and we we found out we can actually leave it out almost just about three full days now without having to pull it back in. But yeah, it's about twelve. We started announcing um on Sunday nights on our social media, we announced where we're going to put it for the following week.
Right.
Uh, I think by the policy, we said twelve hours. I I promised twenty-four and we're doing more than that. And I think it's, we're getting some views on it where people are looking at it. So they know where it's at. I think everybody knows what it looks like at this point. And it's not like we're hiding it. I mean, it's it's out there.
Thank you.
Yep.
Will? Couple of questions. Does that, does the mobile unit also do, can it do like the red light or is it just speed?
This one just does speed. I, they may have technology in there uh that that they could put in.
The reason I ask is someone, someone asked me if it was able to be put at a stop sign that constantly gets run. And I said, I don't think it does that. I think it only does.
I would, I would have to check. So the way it does the red light is it dial, it's hooked into the actual timer on the red light. So when somebody runs the red light, it'll show you a picture of the car, but it also will give you a printout of how long the light, it was yellow, how long it was red before you ran it. So a stop sign, I don't know that it would be able to do that. One of the things we are kind of looking at too is we've seen that we've got that issue down there at East Post of one hundred. We know there's going to be construction next year down there. Uh, I I know the vendor has tested trailers out here that they they send to other jurisdictions. And so I'm going to call and see uh if it's possible, if maybe we could get a trailer for the summer to put out there. I'm worried about the construction crews being out there, just given the sheer numbers that we have. Uh, but that would be something I'd come back to council before we'd ever, you know, try to move forward too far with it.
I know the other question is, I know, and I brought this up before, there will be construction out there, East Post and one hundred. But the the westbound turn to go north, I brought this up, like I said before, that people will drive the shoulder. I just saw it a couple of days ago, someone driving the shoulder and then didn't even stop at the red light, just turned north. Uh, is that camera picking that up?
Should.
On the shoulder?
Yeah. So each camera picks up. Cameras facing eastbound will pick up all the the eastbound lanes on that side, including the turn lanes. I know we had some problems at uh fifteen and one fif- uh fifteen and uh one fifty-one and thirteen. Uh, with that camera coming southbound into town, we were having a hard time picking up because there's two left-hand turn lanes. Uh, so they had to adjust the cameras. They changed those out. The problem we still run into is if the, if in that first lane, a semi pulls up or you get two or three semis, they can't really get a picture of that far left lane. If somebody runs it when there's a semi running parallel with it. We talked about maybe trying to mount one on the pole across the road. But I think we're going to wait and see what happens with this new camera we got, if that makes it any better.
Anyone else? Thanks, Chief.
Thank.
Next item is an update from Leanne on the fiscal year twenty-four capital improvement program.
Thank you, Your Honor. We actually have Brian McKenzie here to present on this item.
Good, Brian. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
So this is an update on the uh twenty twenty-four uh capital improvement program. So you have the handouts um in front of you. There, there's nothing that will appear on the screen. So as part of the revamp process, uh, we wanted to provide this update. It's also something that we've heard that council have requested in the past, so we're really glad to provide this to you. Just a quick uh summary of what this report shows, it's just for the fiscal year twenty-four expenditures on per project. Okay, so if the project was multi-year phased, this just shows what we had budgeted for fiscal year twenty-four. So it's just showing our performance um in the year to see how we've been doing across all the projects. This is a report that we want to take back to you on a quarterly basis. So um it will give a nice update of how we're performing uh during the year. And so the idea here was just for council to view the report and uh give a chance to ask any questions on any specific projects that they had. And we also welcome any feedback. Since it's a new report, welcome any feedback that you have that would make this report more readable, easy to um understand. So I just want to open up the floor for any questions on any of the projects that you see here.
Question, go ahead, Ryan.
Thanks, Mayor. Just to add on to what Brian said, um, we're going to be shifting the projects in motion quarterly update uh align, to align better with the strategic plan. And so a number of these projects would fall in that category too. But if, again, as Brian said, if there's any questions council has now, we can answer them. If there's anything, if there's anything you'd like to see a presentation on, we're happy to do that. Or if there's anything that you'd really like to see included in those quarterly updates as part of the projects in motion, we're happy to do that too.
Don't have anything that, that questions on or? Go ahead.
Well, my my comment all along when we talk about the capital expenditures is, and I'm trying to, I was trying to assess it from this report. And I'm I'm not sure I came to any clear conclusion. I always have the wonder is, do we try to tackle too many capital projects in a year? And then we take a look at the end of the year and see how much we got done. And I know that's what this, part of what this report is trying to accomplish. And I'm trying to take a look at that and and measure that in some aspect. Uh, obviously, I was looking at the amount remaining and the large numbers all relate to some of the larger projects such as the the uh Public Services Building, some of the fleet acquisition. Uh, we've got uh the Plaza Project. So I mean, some of the large numbers are related to that. So at that part, I understand that those are large dollar projects. So I haven't quite spent the time to assess it to say, did we get most of the projects done that we intended to, or was there still too much on our plate? And maybe we try to thin that down in future years. So again, just more of a comment observation, I don't have an assessment of that. I don't know how Ryan or or Mike and the staff feel about that, whether you know, what, if you have any assessment or conclusion on that aspect.
I think Councilman, um, it it started last year with the revampment of the CIP process. So we got to a point where we're more realistic in what is included in that. The the team and the work that we're doing outside of the the council meetings feel that we're performing uh at a much higher level with the execution on the projects. Uh, I do think that very similar to Chief Kitzmiller's presentation about the ATEs. I think having this as a starting point and and the further we go along, that data will help us better analyze and and determine uh if we're in that sweet spot or if we need to adjust. And and certainly um those quarterly updates will will help us with that determination. And obviously, the dialogue and feedback with from from the council will will help us as well.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to add one thing to that. So with the budget work session coming up, uh, there will be a draft of the fiscal year twenty-five to twenty-nine CIP, which will then give an indication. All of the departments uh went through the projects with new estimates, so that will also give us an indication of where we expect to land with fiscal year twenty-four versus what the last, what this shows here. So that will also be another indication.
Anyone else? Okay, uh, I neglected to announce that uh Councilmember Harper is uh joining the meeting on Zoom and he has a question.
Thank you, Your Honor. Can uh, can you hear me okay?
We sure can.
Okay, thank you. So Brian, I'm looking at your summary sheet. The last sheet for uh page four of four. And I'm just look, uh, doing a little comparison between the outstanding purchase orders versus actual expenditures. And I see um that that um I see that that adds to the FY uh amount remaining. Uh, so on that sheet, the outstanding purchase orders plus the actual expenditures i- is the remaining amount that we have yet to expend. I guess the question is, is do we have any sense of what uh for, especially for the big expenditures, do we have any sense of when those POs will need to be paid? I, and maybe that's too granular a question, uh, but any thoughts that you have on that would be appreciated.
Yeah. So um just for clarification, the um the adopted minus the actual expenditures gives you what the amount is there remaining. The, in this current form, the outstanding PO column is just for informational purposes to see the additional funds that are obligated on the project. So um we could change it around. So the actual expenditure minus the outstanding is what's uh remaining. The challenge with that is that our POs in our system uh that they are for the duration of the project. So if it's a multi-year project, the outstanding purchase order kind of skews what the actual expenditure or the budget is for just for this year. So that's the challenge that we have. Uh, we will try to work with that and see if there's another way that we can show the um uh show the outstanding POs maybe in a different way. Because I do understand that that can be confusing because it's all POs left, not just actually fiscal year twenty-four.
Yeah, Mayor, go ahead. Yeah, and I think to Grant's point as well, and Brian and I talked about this on the meeting, line fifty-six, we're talking about the sewer project truck segment seven that is multi-jurisdictional. I mean, that one there, if you're looking at adopted amount of four million, three, and we've got an outstanding PO of seven point six million. So that's what Brian's just talking about. That really kind of skews, if you just look at the bottom numbers, that really throws that outstanding PO amount off compared to uh the the remaining amount. So uh the rest of them seem to be pretty reasonable. That one there, because of the multi-year, uh multi-jurisdictional, that one throws that off. So how you can balance that or adjust that in the future, I think would make the numbers look a little more uh meaningful.
Yeah. Yeah, we could try to dial in and
Yeah.
and try to get the actual amount remaining for the year or uh our estimate amount remaining.
Yeah. Yeah, so.
Oh, go ahead, great.
I was just gonna say, Steve, thanks for that clarification. I didn't pick up on that line fifty-six uh uniquely, but I would just um say, I, the intent of my question really was, is looking forward, what's our remaining financial exposure for what we owe? And so anything that can be done to, I guess, give us that visit. And so anything that can be done to, I guess, give us that visibility quickly would be nice. I appreciate it.
Anyone else? Anything else, Brian?
That's your turn now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is the review of the upcoming agenda for Thursday. First item that's marked is on page four. B three. B three, anything prior to B three that requires discussion or questions? If not, we'll go to B three. Ryan?
Thank you, Your Honor. This action itself is pretty routine. We wanted to flag it because of the amount of snowfall and the amazing job that our team did over the last several way, several days of snow removal operations. And I wanted to point out and and really give give thanks to Ed, John Hughes, Kim Downs, and the rest of the Public Services Team, along with Amber and the two chiefs. I mean, that's really the the amount of improvement that we have done internally with our procedures, with our communication and just our our approach. Just really proud of the team. I think this is a really good example of reaching higher, looking at how our system was set up and and ways to really improve it. And so I just wanted to take this moment to to just say thank you to the team for for doing that. And, you know, one of the things that a lot of folks may not see, but just the amount of collaboration, not just internally, but externally with other partners as well. On Sunday, I think we had a blower, one of our blowers or both of our blowers go down. We were in communication with the chamber about the operations. Brick was was fantastic in getting a timely message out to the businesses, letting them know that we had to postpone our operations. I was able to reach out to the school districts to see if they have any extra hands on deck from the mechanic's standpoint, so we could help. Because our folks were doing a tremendous job, really trying to maintain an outdated fleet. So a a lot of things that were happening behind the scenes that folks don't necessarily see. And and again, for something pretty routine like receive and file the snow and ice control program, that would be an appropriate time to just give a couple of those shout outs.
Hey, any questions? Go ahead.
Just a quick question, Fred. I remember from our, one of our December meetings, we were supposed to start getting some of our fleet equipment, particularly for the snowplows in mid-January. So are we starting to get some of that in?
We, we did make a visit to the Henderson Manufacturing, the upfitter for that.
Yeah.
And at the time, we went up there, they were in the process of upfitting to the chassis. And so we made some comments and asked them to, you know, fine tune it a little bit. And so they're in process, they they did that. So long story short, we should anticipate receiving the beginning chassis in a a couple of weeks at the very longest. Perhaps next week is as early. We we check with them often. So trucks one through eight are in the loop. Trucks nine through eleven have yet to be delivered to them.
All right, good.
Okay. Well, appreciate everything that everyone involved did to do what was needed in light of the situation to to serve the community and bring them through it successfully, so. All right, nothing else is marked on the agenda for discussion? Any questions on any part of the agenda? Matt, we have a closed session?
Mayor, I move to adjourn to closed session regarding real estate transactions as permitted under section twenty-one point five one J of the Code of Iowa.
Second? Then moved and seconded to adjourn to closed session regarding real estate transactions as permitted under section twenty-one point five one J of the Code of Iowa. And we have the legal counsel statement, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have reviewed the proposed subject matter for the closed session and find the same to be appropriate under Iowa Code, section twenty-one point five one J.
Thank you. Any discussion before we vote? Questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Miskin?
Yep.
Mayor Abulosseli?
Yes.
Ms. Mensard?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Sterned?
Yes.
Thank you. We're adjourned to closed session. Thanks for joining us. Just a note that I will be out of town on Thursday, so. Mayor Protem will handle her first meeting.